General Law Chapter.
Sorry about that.
Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one, A three, and Suffolk Construction versus D Cam four forty nine Mass. Four forty four, parentheses, two thousand and seven, to discuss thirty one Hunting Lane, forty one North Main Street, Igor Lebaski Etelle versus the Town of Sherburne. Leon Court number twenty one M I S C P S zero 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 one ninety three, parentheses, H P S. And thirty one Hunting Lane LLC versus Sherburne Board of Appeals. Housing Appeals Committee number twenty twenty one dash oh five. And forty one North Main Street LLC versus Sherburne Board of Appeals. Housing Appeals Committee number twenty twenty one dash oh six. And pursuant to General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one, A seven. To comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Specifically, the Public Records Law, General Law Chapter four, Section seven, parentheses, twenty six. Discuss privileged communication from town council regarding litigation. Item number two is strategy session to prepare for contract negotiators with non bargaining employee. Pursuant to General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one, A two. And that is the lieutenant's position for the police department. I'll need a second and a roll call chairman.
Okay, thank you, Diane. I do declare the need to discuss these two items in executive session, so I'd like to get a second and a roll call vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric? He muted, he muted, I, and I am I as well.
Aye.
So we're going to turn the recording. Okay, everybody, we're herding cats and we're a little bit late, but we apologize. And so what I'd like to do is now open the select board meeting of March sixteenth, twenty twenty three. With the open session, I'd like to start with asking the Assistant Town Administrator to read the open session agenda points.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. We have a public comment period and Brian Conley, Library Trustees Chair will be here to make an announcement. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated forty eight hours in advance may be added. Item number one is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant, draft minutes of January fourteenth, February sixteenth, and March second, twenty twenty three. The next meeting, scheduled meeting for the select board is March thirtieth, and there is also an advisory hearing this Saturday on the eighteenth that the select board will be attending. There is a consideration of a one day liquor license for the Friends of the Sherburne Library for April first, twenty twenty three. There is the review of the proposed cable TV Verizon license with attorney Bill Solomon. He'll be here today to explain that. At eight o'clock, we have a posted public hearing regarding building department fees. And Chris Kenny, the building commissioner, will be here to review those fees with the select board. Item number four is the Massachusetts Jail Diversion Program Grants. Jerry Musset and Chief Tom Galvin will be here. It's a crisis intervention team grant for Middlesex County and a co-response grant for Holliston, Hopkinton, and Sherburne. Item number five is a request to use surplus equipment fund from Zach Wad Fire Chief. And a consideration of a donation that Zach Wad is bringing forward from the fire chief also. Item number seven is the twenty twenty three annual town meeting warrant, review and consideration of signing the twenty twenty three. Annual Town Meeting Warrant and consideration of the ballot questions to the town clerk by April fourth, twenty twenty three. Item number eight is consideration of appointments. The Farm Park Advisory Committee, Xenia Wild for term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty six. Metropolitan Area Planning Council, Robert Wolf for term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Interim Finance Director for a sixty day extension to expire May sixteenth, twenty twenty three. Item number nine is consideration of acceptance of chapter two sixty nine of the Acts of twenty twenty two. Retiring one time caller for F Y twenty three. Item numbers ten is consideration of signing the intercomplemental agreement I M A between the Town of Sherburne. And the Dover Sherburne Regional School District, Dawn Fatory Business Administrator for the Dover Sherburne Public School will be here. Item number eleven is consideration of routine business, select board reports, and town administrator reports.
Thank you very much, Diane. Are there any suggested revisions to the agenda?
Yes.
Paul, go ahead.
We have on the agenda approving ballot questions. And I have said for at least a decade, I will not vote for a ballot question unless advisory has asked us to put a ballot question on. Advisory is meeting on the eighteenth. I would like to have that agenda item dealt with by the board on the eighteenth. Following the advisory hearing, if they decide to fund things with free cash or whatever. I'm going to go with what they recommend. I'm not in a position to take any position on these ballot questions tonight, so I'm asking that that be put off to our meeting of the eighteenth.
Yeah, I think that's fair, Paul. I think they, this reflects their input, but we'll do that. We can do that on the eighteenth. So that's a fair, fair comment. So do you want to make a motion to approve the agenda subject to your adjustment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Yep, I.
I am I as well. That sounds good. Do I have a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Will of approval.
Have a second? Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So Bill's here. Can you see us, Bill?
I can, thank you, yep.
Bill's gonna, Bill's gonna introduce us to, we've been working with him for, goodness knows how long to. Verizon's been very slow to work with, to review a renewed license for the Verizon cable TV license. One, one thing I want to point out is this eight P M. Public hearing, we have to start it at eight P M. Sharp because it's a public hearing. So we don't have any flexibility in the time slot, and that gives us around twenty minutes, I think, here, Bill.
Great, okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman Jeff. Wouldn't I just run through the summary that I provided to the board? Keep it simple. These are the major points, but the important points. The Verizon cable subscribers as of December thirty first, two thousand twenty one were five hundred and forty eight. The new number is out. Diane, you might have the, 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 the number that's on the check for the fifty cents per subscriber, but it'll be down a little bit. Comcast has five hundred and thirty three subscribers. The proposed license term is five years. However, Verizon has, has the, the right. No, no sooner than the thirty first month to give a hundred and eighty days written notice to term, to leave the license early to notice the termination. So no sooner than the thirty first month after the effective date, which if, as the moment would be March thirtieth. Verizon anytime after that can provide a notice of a hundred and eighty days and terminate. That, that reflects the fact that they, Verizon told Wall Street over five years ago that their goal is to get out of cable, do streaming video in the perfect world, to have every customer as a wireless customer. But that, that process, certainly wireless is slower because of the rollout of four G, of four G being slower. And secondly, Verizon has a good business in Sherburne and other communities. So it's not that easy to transition from a successful cable business because they're an excellent cable company to something else. So it's not at all clear they would exercise that option, but because that's a company policy. The folks who work for the company are told that to get into the license is a right of termination. Just in case they want to exercise it. The good news about the right of termination is that it reflects the reality that a license is not just permission to Verizon to operate a cable system, but it's an agreement with consideration both ways where Verizon makes promises. And so to exit that, they, they, they need a termination provision as they see it. In, in exchange for that termination provision, Verizon is paying five years of PEG capital, public education government, community television capital, paying that in, within, in less than three years. And so that if they were to exercise the option to terminate at the earliest point in time, they would have paid five years of capital in three years. PEG access channels, there are currently three standard definition access channels that'll continue. But with, upon written request of the town, what a selectman is issuing authority. Verizon will provide a high definition PEG access channel in addition to those three standard definitions. They'll provide that with, after a two hundred and seventy day notice period. But the town, working with the access folks, that channel can be used for, yeah. Repeating what's on another channel, the public educational government channel, or it could be a best of channel, and you have a right to change from one to the other one time during the license. PEG access and it will support the franchise fee that continues at five percent of gross revenue, of the company's gross revenues. That's the maximum allowed under the Cable Act. PEG grants, the PEG grant is forty seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. It's paid in three payments. First payment within forty five days is, is like a double payment, twenty three thousand nine seventy five. And then thereafter, the first and third anniversary, eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty seven dollars and fifty cents, or total forty seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. That number has to be seen in, in relationship to the number of subscribers, which are just over five hundred. And so it's, it's the very, the high end of PEG capital payments by Verizon. That reflects the fact that they recognize the strength of the program in Sherburne. And also it, it reflects in part where the town has been with Verizon and where it's going. So it's a, it's, it's a good number for the town, and the stronger your community television is, the better Verizon is as a cable company, so it's a win win. PEG interconnection and cable casting, Verizon will continue to connect to the town hall. And they'll continue to connect to the Dover Sherburne High School where the studio is located, the Dover Sherburne Community Television Studio. There's some caveats that they're only committing to bring the signal from Dover, Dover Sherburne High School if they're, if they can do it. If it's, if they have permission to do it, and if Dover has a cable license, and you know, those are, those are not unreasonable provisions. One can dicker back and forth on the language, but I think it's, 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 it's an okay place for the town to be because those are two things that are likely to be in unison, having a cable license in Dover and Sherburne are unlikely to be different. It doesn't mean they can't still otherwise provide it, but they're, they're not required to. So in the current license, there's a connection at the community house and also at the elementary school. That's not used by Dover Sherburne Community Access, and so that wasn't continued. There's some advantage to not continuing that because in theory, this isn't done, and I don't think it'll be done, but in theory, cable company can charge the maintenance operating cost of video returns. So if the town feels that there's not a need to have a fiber connection, that they can, they can transmit the signal in other ways from those locations, and it doesn't happen that often. It, it makes sense to no longer require that, and that's what this license provides after discussion by the committee and also input by Dover Sherburne Community Television. Cable service to public buildings, Verizon does not currently provide cable service to public buildings in Sherburne. Doesn't provide that anywhere in the Commonwealth, frankly, in a, in a community where Comcast is located. They provided it for years, so you don't need it for two, from two parties. But if the town did seek to have that, it would write Verizon, and Verizon would be required to provide it. There is a FCC order back in two thousand and nineteen called in kind consideration where the company does have the right to put the marginal cost of providing such cable service to public buildings against, against the five percent franchise fee. And so this provision of the cable license recognizes that. But frankly, as I said, I think there's, there's no possibility the town will need to have Verizon to provide cable service to public buildings. But if it came up and you needed it, you can request it, and they would have to provide it. And we listed the buildings that currently exist in the town, just so that they know where those would be if, if that were to be implemented. The electronic program guide, as you know, most programming cable, you can find in the electronic program guide. Set it for your DVR, you can find out what's, what's playing. It'd be helpful to have the electronic program guide for PEG access. This is a continuation of the provision we had in fifteen years ago, which basically says if they, if Verizon provides that to any other community. They have to come to Sherburne and discuss with you not only the technical and and financial feasibility of doing that, but of, of doing it, of providing it. You know, because Verizon is, since they're looking to a different future, it's unlikely they would start implementing that. But if they do, we'll have the right in, in Sherburne to say, come here, and in fact, tell us, you know, we'd like to have it here. And, you know, if you, if you have a reason not to do it, you need to explain that to us. The same thing for PEG access, video and demand, if they provide it in another municipality, they have to come to Sherburne and discuss not only the feasibility of doing it, but also doing it, providing that. So that's a summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's a strong license on, on legal provisions. It has a very strong language, best in the state on the definition of gross revenue. That, and dealing with the issue of bundling, what happens when you have three service bundles at one time? How do you calculate what the cable portion is? That's a very important provision that, that Sherburne's license language is second to none. And otherwise, what we do at old cable licenses, try to make sure that neither side tries to gain an advantage going forward, that we're dealing with cable service and not other services, and this license does that. Be happy to answer any questions, sir?
Yeah, I would just, before I recognize you, Marion, I'm going to just say a few things. We've been working with, Bill's been very supportive of us in working through this. So I think that we've made good progress on it. Now, this requires a public hearing. So the reason we have this on the agenda tonight is to let you be aware of what the language is, what the key provisions are, so you can better inform yourselves. And we have on the thirtieth of March, we have the public hearing already scheduled. It's been advertised as required. So Bill will rejoin us on the thirtieth of March and
Be back.
And we'll have a, a brief, I think a brief, if I'm correct, Diane, a brief executive session, a brief open session also in addition to the hearing, so that we can approve it on that night. So you haven't had a chance, if you haven't had a chance to review it all yet, that's fine. This is just to get the push to get the language out there, so you have the document and, and two weeks we'll have the hearing and then approve the renewal. We pushed for the timing because we got several extensions of the license, and it technically expires the end of March, so that's why we're doing it all this way. So that's the news there. One other positive note is, I believe Verizon is unrelated to the contract, but they're showing up Monday night, I believe, at Woodhaven to sign up any residents that want Fios. So they're very excited in Woodhaven.
That's great.
Turns out they're enormous NFL fans over there. So anyway, Marion, you have your hand up.
All right. I wonder for the general audience here, could you define what you mean by PEG? They may not know what you're talking about.
Sure, no, thank you. PEG is public, educational, and government access programming, the community television. Apparently, there's, you know, three channels. One is, is public programming, residents can, and others can put on programming on community groups. Is the government channel, which of course runs the government meetings, a wide array. And there's the educational channel, the studio is at the high school, and that has a wide array of educational programming. And that'll continue as mentioned, and you'll have yet another channel, the high definition channel. Interesting enough, if you had asked me ten years ago, I would have said that public access would be on the high definition channel as well as the standard, because there's a lot of visual visual video that would deserve high definition, and whereas I always say, after a certain point, none of us need high definition to better see, see us. But interesting enough, what, what towns have found is that by having high definition for the government channel, the documents you put on the screen through the computer or otherwise are visible to the public at home, so they can follow along with whatever the document might be that's being referred to. And that advantage has caused a lot of communities to decide to use the high definition channel for government access. That's something that you want to have discussion and input to at Dover Sherburne Community Television. I think they're going to respect what your, what your, what your wish is, but I did find it interesting that turns out government access is, is the channel that mostly is selected for high definition going forward.
But I have one other quick question. You know, we're all about to have a new library open. You talked about public meetings. What kind of Verizon access will be to the public library? I'm sure Brian can answer this as well, but the people here might want to know exactly what kind of connections, cable, Fios, whatever, will be available.
Sure. And you know, I think Doug Ambos is here, and he can, can answer that, but Dover Sherburne Community Television returns the signal to town hall by various means, including through the internet wireless. So that the, in, in the modern day, a fiber connection is not the only connection that would work when you need to have a live video from a location. So maybe we could have Doug Ambos respond to that if that's, if that works for the board.
I think the library has always had access, so I think it's just not a new service.
Well, there's a difference between internet and cable TV access, where you could watch things versus a direct connection to our retransmitting onto our cable channels.
Yeah.
And, and Bill described it well. If, if there's a request to cover a government meeting that happens to be in one of the spaces in the library, it would be covered by our staff or by volunteers. And it would be then retransmitted on cable either at a later date, or we also have a method to go live over cell or Wi Fi. So we don't need the infrastructure hooked back up to the town hall per se.
But the library will get cable service from Comcast going forward, since they're required to, to provide cable service to all buildings current and future. And if it ever came to be, Verizon would have to do that also, requested by the town. So that's cable service. That libraries actually get free internet service from Comcast, but it's a very low level, so they usually have their own internet service. As Doug said, the key aspect is the methodology to go live from a building. If you wanted to put that live on television, and as Doug said, both through fiber and wireless, that signal can now be sent. If it's a building that had, like town hall, you want a fiber connection, it's a building that has programming once in a while. It's, it's cost effective to do it through fiber or wireless.
Okay. So if there's no other comments, I think we've covered what we need to cover tonight. And we'll see you again in.
Wait, I have one. I do have a question.
Okay, George.
How does the cable service relate to internet service? Because more and more people are not even using cable anymore, including myself, like Verizon provides. I only subscribe to their internet, and I think there's other options for internet service, like, does, does this? I guess, just inform me, like, we have this cable, cable TV agreement, but is there anything to do with internet service to the town?
Well, this is, you're getting your internet service through cable right now, though, aren't you?
No, not cable. I don't, all I have is an internet connection. I use a YouTube TV for my television. And I don't have a home phone. I don't have a landline either.
That's prob, that's probably not coming through this contract.
Well, no, that's what I'm wondering. That's, that's my question. Like, if you don't use cable TV and you don't use phone service, like, I guess, how are we making sure that Verizon continues to provide internet service to the town, which I think is more important than, say, cable TV?
Sure, that's not covered by the FCC guidelines. Go ahead.
Right, no, no, that's right. The, the, the Telecommunication Act, which goes back to nineteen twenties, and then was, cable came around in nineteen eighty four, has these boxes when, when there wasn't this convergence. So there's a telephone box, and then in the eight eighty four, there's a cable box, and then the internet has bounced around from, is it telecom, is it cable, is it telecommunications? Is it this thing called information service? So as Doug said, the, the Telecommunication Act does not give the town direct authority over the internet. That said, there are, that doesn't mean that going forward, the town doesn't have certain rights with respect to its right of way and compensation for its right of way. And so just not to get too into the weeds, but Comcast, for instance, as a traditional cable company, they're in your public way only because, at this point, because they have a cable franchise. So they have a right, under the, particularly FCC order, that to provide broadband and telephone and even wireless because they have a cable franchise. If they didn't have a cable franchise, they couldn't currently be in the Sherburne public way. Verizon is in the public way because it has state permits for telephone and for internet, and that apply, apply to internet. So there's nothing in this cable license that's indicated that would, would regulate the internet. There's nothing in this cable license that could regulate the internet, but that doesn't mean that mean, doesn't mean that we want to, in this license, give Verizon rights beyond what the Telecommunication Act provides. And it doesn't mean that going forward, there may not be ways for compensation. Final point, there's a bill now being sponsored by many senators and representatives, proposed by Mass Access, the folks who represent the the access corporations across the, the, the state. And that bill provides for, for internet broadband companies to pay money toward community television, PEG access. Some money goes to the Commonwealth, some money goes to the municipality, and some money goes to the access corp. And I encourage you, and I could, you know, send some information, to look at that bill and see if that's something you want to get behind. It's, it's now at a critical stage. If that were to pass, then there would be compensation for companies that are not cable companies that provide video and that have revenues over X million dollars to, to help support community television going forward.
Okay, we've got a, we've got to move to our public hearing in a minute. Paul, is your hand still up, or do you have a question?
I was just going to make a comment that as, as a lawyer, I took the time to read the cable license and found it to be in pretty good shape from what I've seen in other communities. So it was well done.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank, thanks for your time, and we'll see you in two weeks, Bill.
We'll see you then. Have a good meeting. Bye bye.
All right.
Thank you, Jeff.
You bet. So our next agenda item is eight o'clock, which I have to stick to, is a public hearing on the building department. So I'm going to read the public hearing notice. The Town of Sherburne, Massachusetts, the Select Board is holding a virtual public hearing on Thursday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty three, at eight P M. To consider changes to the building plumbing electrical permit fee schedule. All written comments are invited or have been invited, and Zoom information was posted on the town's meeting site forty eight hours in advance of this meeting. So I would now like to ask, Chris is on here, if you want to present and the hearing for it. There you are, there you are.
Hello, everybody. So hopefully, this is a pretty straightforward revision to the existing permit fees. If you have the document in front of you. We're making some really minor changes to the building and mechanical sheet metal permit fees. The major one is we're charging based upon the value of the work for For, uh, mechanical slash sheet metal permits. Uh, where previously they'd always been a flat fee, uh, we just have a lot more bigger systems going in. Where, um, you know, the town's missing out on a certain amount of revenue, um, from those systems, it costs more than ten thousand dollars. Because that's, that's sort of what we capped it with the, uh, flat fee, so, so this accounts for now. Doing more involved mechanical work, uh, the same thing goes for foundation only, those for some reason have always been limited at a hundred eighty dollars. Uh, as a flat fee, but it doesn't cost eighteen thousand dollars to build a foundation anymore, um, so. The new fee, uh, adjust that to just go by the value of the work with the base still, the, the minimum fee still being a hundred eighty dollars, other than that. Um, we've just moved a few little categories around and added a new category for heat pumps into thermal, which we're starting to get more. Uh, of those installed in town as the energy codes have changed. On the electrical side. The only thing I'm changing is adding a note about off-hours inspections, we have our. Current wiring inspector who works days a week, uh, and is regular scheduled. Is we have a lot of people that have been asking for inspections on days that he does not expect, and we have had to send out the backup. Deputy inspectors, so this, uh, helps cover the cost of sending out the deputy inspector on, on days when the, um. The main inspector is not working in town, um, anyway, and then the big one was, um. When we looked at how the fees were related to the costs of the department. Everything was pretty well covered as far as the building goes and the, uh, electrical, those, those, those. Certainly were within, um, the amount of, uh, money that's coming in, but the plumbing and gas actually were, was short. This is looking at the FY twenty-two, um, as the last complete year we had, but that was actually short by about eighty-five hundred dollars. On the fees and so, um, I said, well, that, this is a place where we should really make some adjustments so that. The revenue from those permits actually covers the cost of the inspector's salary, um. So the proposal is basically just to raise, uh, the minimum fees from, um, I think they used to be a hundred dollars. To a hundred fifty dollars, which is now in line with what the, the minimum fees are for the building permit, so it's not sort of out of the ordinary, um. And we raised the fees of the, um, you know, single fixture replacements from seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars, it's, it's not, it's not a major gain. But if we use FY twenty-two and it's as an example, um, for numbers of permits that come in of different classifications. Uh, this would have amounted to an additional eighty-two hundred dollars, um, which is basically what we were short that year, so it seems like a pretty good. Uh, uh, adjustment to make, um, and I, it certainly doesn't seem unreasonable compared to other towns, um. And I, and you know, anyway, it's, uh, like I said, hopefully a relatively modest ask here.
Great, thanks for the summary, Chris. That's a public hearing, I see no hands raised, so I don't see any public comment, does anyone on the select board have, uh, input?
My input.
Go ahead, Paul.
My input would be that. It's exactly what we want the, the building inspector to do is to make sure that, that fees are covering costs. So I'm, I'm delighted to hear that that's. Been done and been looked at. While it's always, uh. It's always hard sometimes to raise fees to ourselves because we're, we're all the ones who are going to be paying this. It's for buildings in the town, is, there's an inherent fairness that cost should be covered. So I would support this and thank Chris for making sure that we're covering our costs.
Okay, thanks, Paul, George?
Oh yeah, just a quick question for Chris, um. The, just wanted to make sure these fees are still in line with, uh, towns surrounding us. Uh, we don't want to be cost prohibitive to build in, so.
Yeah, um, no, we're actually pretty, pretty well in line with most of the other towns. Um, Framingham and Natick have actually gone quite a bit higher on their, um, fees lately, um. But as far as the towns that are close to our size and scope, we're right on track, um, so I don't, I don't expect anybody to yell and scream too much about this.
Okay, thank you.
Now, do we need to vote to approve this then, I guess, Chris?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question, sorry.
Oh, okay, Eric and then Paul, go ahead.
Screens, because Chris is at the end here, and I flip back and forth to see us and to see him.
I moved him around, but go ahead, on my screen.
Yeah, it doesn't work on my screen, um, I guess, about how many? Of these type of, I don't have to do each one, but how many permits do we even issue a year about?
Um, I'll tell you, well, so let's go back to twenty-two because that's the last year we have records for. We did three hundred fifty-three building permits.
Okay.
Hundred forty-nine electrical permits, eighty-seven plumbing, eighty-four gas and the sheet metal. Hopefully that gives you a little bit of idea and, and as far as the fees go, um, you know, the, the building in that year was a hundred and forty-one thousand plus or minus. The electrical was about thirty thousand, the plumbing and gas together was about, um. Sixteen thousand and the sheet metal was about six thousand dollars, and so all in all, with the, all these changes, the mechanical plus the plumbing and gas. Should come in around nine to twelve thousand dollars, something like that every year now, um. You know, we don't see so many mechanical permits, obviously, we only did thirty in twenty-two, um, but there's a certain amount of extra revenue going to be generated by having the fees based on the. On the actual cost of the work.
Okay, that's a lot of permits, I didn't realize that, and I, I quick calc, that's like twenty-five percent of the town, I think.
Yeah, I'm driving around a lot, man.
Seriously, okay, very good, thank you for that answer.
Paul, you're gonna add something?
I was gonna move to adopt the fee schedule as proposed.
Do you have a second?
And I second.
Marion?
I.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well, thank you, Chris, great work, thank you for the analysis and the presentation. So, so I screwed up at the start of the meeting and forgot a public comment, so mea culpa and it's a very good.
It's a very important public.
I know, I know, but you, once we started late and I got beside myself with confusion, so I'm gonna have Brian Conley make an announcement, please.
And, and I texted Jeff that we can wait another thirty minutes, given how long we've waited. But I, I'm very happy to say we, the library received its, uh. Certificate of Public Occupancy yesterday and will be reopening to the public on Monday, the twentieth. Uh, we've posted that on the town website, the library site, Nextdoor, Sherborne and other social media. I think our communications team has a plan to put a banner up between the split on sixteen and twenty-seven. Uh, as well, and I'd just like to thank the support from the select board and particularly Jeff and Eric, they've been. Along with us for the, uh, very closely for the whole ride and, and appreciate that support and. I don't see Sean on, but Sean Colleen is, and his team have done tremendous work, I. I dropped in Saturday and he was in there literally drilling holes in a, in an area to get everything up to code, so. Um, they've done a great job as well as.
He was there Sunday, he was there Sunday, he was there Sunday too.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
To, to not only Jeff and Eric and Sean, but also to you, Brian, and to the. Whole team of people, the building committee, the board of trustees, all of you have put in enormous amount of time. Thank you for getting it done.
One last group, the staff has done a phenomenal job in the last six to seven weeks. Uh, moving in, they, they're exhausted, but they literally have worked pretty much night and day to get this. Everything in the building and finding things that have been, were going to be stored for two years that were stored for four or five years. So it has not been an easy process and they really, um, are unsung heroes too.
Yep, and so we're.
I know Liz is here, she was.
She was here earlier, but I think she, she dropped and, uh, we are looking to, uh, April twenty-ninth as kind of a more formal ribbon cutting. That, uh, we always felt we needed about six weeks to get invitations out and get it organized, so, uh, we've got a trustees meeting on Tuesday and we'll probably look to be. Uh, voting on that date.
Thank you very much, Brian, Marion, Marion, I think has a comment or a question.
I, I'm lowering my hand, uh, Brian, you just answered my question, I was gonna ask, when is the party? And when can we celebrate all the work that the people who have been involved in this have done, I mean, as. Uh, as a relatively new person on the select board, I had no idea how much. Work over the course of seven years has gone into this and the team that has done it really, uh, deserve, uh, major kudos and I hope that. Is recognized when we do open the library, that you people will be the stars of the show.
Yeah, we've got a few generations of trustees, we'll be bringing back for that one, thanks, Marion.
And, and the friends, I know that the friends had a lot to do and, and your building committee, you've had a lot of people. Through many generations of this that have worked very hard and.
Yeah, thanks, George, just a fun fact that there has been zero turnover on the building committee, Jim Colby's kept that team together through, through it all, wow.
Wow, yeah.
Very impressive.
I mean, I mean, the building committee and especially is no question about it, it amazes me. Day in and day out, and there's some people who signed up because they want to like, you know, do some of the more. Decorative and ornamental aspects of the library and came on, you know, six years ago, whatever it was, maybe seven years ago. You have to focus on some of that stuff and to sit through countless meetings about incompetent contractors is, uh, just, um, it's just a test of endurance and I applaud them.
Yeah, I, I should add that, uh, we also need to applaud the people who continue to work on this because the town is still trying to recover costs. And that is continuing work by the library board and the building committee and others, so. You know, thanks in advance for that too.
All right, well, thank you very much for the announcement, Brian, and once again, I'll apologize to Liz for, should have been, uh, earlier. So the next agenda item is, um, Chief Galvin talking about the, uh, he and I had a, and Jeremy had a discussion about this a week or two ago about the jail diversion grants and. One on crisis intervention, intervention and one on a co-response grant, and it's interesting, uh. It's, it's really more about the structure of what Tom and the department are doing, we're really taking a lead and I. I think you should, uh, maybe explain a little bit of that, Tom, please.
Absolutely, so, uh, I just want to go into a couple of, uh, grant opportunities, some that we're already taking advantage of, but that we're going to change, um, on. Law enforcement and the response to, uh, working with people that are in mental health crisis, because I think we've all seen. Too often over recent history, uh, it playing out on the news, uh, and negative result when, when the police respond to. Uh, someone who's in a, in a mental health crisis, um, so as I think you're all aware, we have been, uh, part of a regional. Uh, jail diversion co-response program since twenty fifteen, um, so originally it was Holliston, Hawkington, Ashland and Sherburne that joined together. Uh, received a grant from Department of Mental Health, uh, to fund a embedded, uh, co-response clinician that would, uh, ride with police officers and respond to calls for service. Um, over the years, that's kind of morphed a little bit, Ashland dropped out of the program, um, and unfortunately, over almost the past year. Um, we've actually been without a clinician, so the way that our, our program works is we're funded by DMH. And we contract with advocates in Framingham, who then provides a clinician to us, um. And with, with that service, um, you know, with the job market and everything we've seen post-COVID, um, they're having very difficult times staffing those positions. Uh, and one of the, the things that we've looked at is the, the pay that's available. And because it's, it's run through advocates, um, they take twenty-five to thirty percent of the grant off the top for their administrative fees. Um, and then the rest is paid to a, a co-response clinician, so we've had meetings, uh, with Holliston and Hawkington about how we're going to work this out. Uh, we had a meeting, a joint meeting with all the, the town administrators and the Department of Mental Health. And we decided that, uh, we would withdraw from our contract with advocates and move to, uh. Fund our own position, um, so we have a current grant that expires, that, that, that covers us through June thirtieth, um. We're actually going to meet with DMH again next week, uh, we're gonna modify that grant, um, the town of Holliston, uh, is, is the grant recipient right now, it's going to stay that way. Um, and they're actually going to take on a new town employee, completely funded by the grant, which will be our co-response clinician. Uh, we're going to work in next year's grant to actually restructure the program to bring on a second clinician. Uh, and possibly a third if possible, um, so I just want to kind of make you aware of that, that, that things are changing, we're, we're going to work through DMH to improve the service. Um, and you know, the ultimate goal would be to have a, a co-response clinician in each one of the three communities funded by the grant. So that's, that's what we're kind of, kind of work towards with that. The second part of this, which really plays directly off the co-response, uh, and looking at the times where we don't have that, that option available. Is, is crisis intervention training, uh, all of our police officers are trained in mental health first aid. Uh, but the next level of that is crisis intervention training, so two years ago, um, the Tewksbury Police Department. Uh, took on a grant for, uh, the Middlesex County, uh, Crisis Intervention Team. Uh, Training and Technical Assistance Center, so the CIT T-TAC. Um, Tewksbury also has a, a jail diversion co-response program similar to ours, um, but they're going through some restructuring. And they worked and utilized the, the CIT T-TAC and the co-response together, um, so that we had been working over the past year. To run some of that CIT training in our area, uh, because it was focused in Tewksbury, a lot of the training was focused in that area. Um, and so we've been looking to bring the training to our part of the county, um, so the, the director of the, the T-TAC, uh, approached. Us here in Sherburne, um, as they're not going to be funded through Tewksbury anymore. Uh, because of Tewksbury's restructuring and the way they're going to change their co-response program, um, they're no longer going to apply for the grant. Um, so the CIT T-TAC is an important piece of the puzzle in, in mental health response. And, uh, he actually approached us and asked if this is something that Sherburne would be interested in, um, it's something I'm very excited to, to take on and, and to look at. So we've been working, uh, over the past few weeks, uh, to look into the grants, we had a discussion with DMH about this as well. We've talked to our neighboring communities and our partners, all of our neighboring communities have, uh. Have issued, the police chiefs have issued letters of support if this is to, to occur, and so we're going to work on a grant, um, to fund this program. Uh, so what the program ultimately does is provide crisis intervention training, a forty-hour course for all police officers. Um, there's an advanced forty-hour course that we can then move our police officers into, and it also continues that mental health first aid training that we've also already been getting our, uh. Our police officers trained in, but from a different source, um, so what the grant would do would fund the positions that run the T-TAC. Um, so we would actually need to take on those employees to the town, um, there would be zero cost to the town, DMH ultimately funds it all, we would just be a conduit for the funding. And, uh, it, it's an exciting opportunity, I think it puts us in the forefront of. Um, law enforcement's response to people in mental health crisis, which I think we, we still need to improve, I think we've done a great job here. Um, but it needs to get better and it needs to get better everywhere and it allows us to be the leader in that within Middlesex County. Um, so I just kind of wanted to bring you up to speed on where we are and what we're thinking about and, uh, you know, to see if you had any concerns at this point.
Jeff?
Go ahead, Paul.
So I wanted to commend the chief on this, uh, this is a wonderful initiative, it, uh. Really makes a big difference for police departments. To have a mental health clinician. Because so many incidents. That in the past. Sometimes spiraled out of control and didn't end well. Could have. Could have been avoided. If it had been that skill. Having a clinician. Gets a better result for the, the person who is in crises. That caused the police to come. It's safer for the police department. Because you can employ all kinds of de-escalation strategies. That a clinician has those, those skills and the ability to talk to the person in crisis. And it's safer for the public. So I think it's a, it's a win-win-win, it's a win for our citizens here in Sherburne and it's a win for all the citizens. In Middlesex County, it sounds like if, if we're able to get, uh, some leadership on, from the state in grant funding. To allow this, this, uh, training program to continue and to have these clinicians available to us. So you're exactly on the right track. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And a good job, this is well done.
Thank you very much.
I would, I agree, echo Paul, but it's actually more than that, Paul, we're actually taking the leadership here, not only are we going to have these resources in town, but Tom's taking a lot of leadership here, we're going to be leading. The Crisis Innovation Program for Middlesex County, for all of Middlesex County, and previously people in our part of this. County had to go all the way to Tewksbury, okay, so, or get response from Tewksbury, so this is. county had to go all the way to Tewksbury, okay? So or get response from Tewksbury. So this is actually not just our program. We're helping with Holliston and Hawkington lead the co-response grant. And we're leading a crisis intervention team. They'll be our town employees, but the costs won't come from the town. So it's it's everything you said and more, I guess I'd say, Paul. So this is really kudos to Tom for stepping up and taking you know, a a regional leadership position, I think, which which we're really benefiting from. Jeremy, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think it's been stated well and great. This is a really great opportunities to to program one to you know, fix something that is slightly broken, that that's a the resource for the community and two for you know, for for Tom and his his department kind of take a lead on crisis intervention training. So I'm very much in support.
Yep. Thank you, Tom. I'm assuming, do we have to vote to accept the grants? Are there grant specific grants?
Nothing yet. Um, I will you I will keep you informed as we continue to move forward as, you know, and we we talk to DMH more and the grants actually the grant applications actually get filed.
Great. Well, thanks for briefing us. And thanks to all the prep work that you caused this to come about too. All right. So we're going to listen to Zach Swap Shop. Go ahead. Zach, tell us about your surplus equipment fund.
That's a great opening for this discussion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So as you can see in your packet, we're requesting that the board authorize us to spend eight thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-four cents from our surplus equipment fund. It's to cover matching costs for five grants that the department has been awarded and used in in recent history. The balance, our balance in that fund is over ninety-five hundred dollars, so there is enough money to cover it.
It's just as it was intended to do. It gives you a lot of flexibility, it seems like, in terms of taking advantage of opportunities as they arise.
Exactly. It would be really hard to cover matching funds with our operating budget.
Yep.
So this is such a no-brainer. Can I move the approval?
Paul always accepts money. One of his many fortes. All right. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
All right, Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
I might as well. Thank you, Zach.
I actually have one more, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
We're we're requesting that the board accept a very generous donation from the the Rocchio family in the amount of five hundred dollars that they made to the department.
So I was going to move the approval of this, but I needed to ask the question. Is there a purpose for the gift that needs to be mentioned?
There was no specific purpose. The department had a response at their property in the fall and we we've attempted to recover costs through their through an insurance company. We haven't been successful as of yet, but we intend that these funds will be used towards some of those equipment-related costs.
Okay, so we'll move approval.
Second.
Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
I might as well. Thank you, Zach. We have everything there?
Could I just add to that, to to thank the Rocchio family for the contribution, for the donation?
Yep.
That was very kind and generous.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're here.
Very good. Okay. We're on to the warrant. We got the the warrant's been changing up from Juniors at noon today, I think, making changes. She can correct me with the town council on the zoning one, but we have the final, final, final warrant. And Diane included that as well as the warrant checklist and the ballot question list in our packet.
So the important thing is for us to issue the warrant. So could I make a motion to issue the warrant as finalized as the official warrant for the town meeting and for the advisory hearing all other events relating to the annual town meeting.
Travis, second?
My second.
Is there any discussion from the select board before we vote? All right, Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I might as well. Very good. And we deferred on the ballot questions as Paul asked us to do. So we'll we'll talk about that during the advisory public hearing. Jeannie, what did I forget?
Um, I just want to know when you're going to sign it.
I'll come tomorrow if you want.
Okay.
I can I can stop by tomorrow as well.
All right.
Should we all sign it in person or should we vote to have Diane sign?
I think we should sign the warrant in person.
Okay, so why don't we all?
I mean, you're approving it tonight, so you can sign it tomorrow. You can sign it Monday, Tuesday.
Okay.
I'd like to get it posted on the website by Tuesday. A signed copy.
We can sign it at Saturday's meeting. We're all going to be there.
No, we're not going to be there.
No.
It's virtual.
Yeah.
We can actually sign it tomorrow, and I know the town hall closes early, so maybe I'll put it in the library. It'll be open all day. We'll on August Monday. Forget it.
Uh, Jeannie, is it true that you cannot post it on the website until it's been signed?
No, no, no. It's posted now as a draft. I just normally I I like to put the signed copy up.
Okay, so people should know it's there already, so they should look.
It is there already, and I did an e-alert this afternoon with the draft, final draft.
Okay. Are you all set? Jackie's got a hand up too.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I just wanted to say that I am going to be at the office all day until five o'clock tomorrow. So if any of you can't come by in the morning and you want to come in the afternoon, I will be there because it's the last day to take not take out nomination papers. So I will be there until five. If you want to come by and sign, I can have Jeannie leave it with me. Okay?
Sounds good. Thanks for giving us the flexibility. You appreciate it.
Welcome.
Are there any other comments?
The warrant article, do we, I mean, the warrant articles, do we need to vote tonight to whether we're supporting them or not? Are we doing it on Saturday?
It's funny you should say that, because I asked Diane that question, because if you look at this checklist she gave us, we really only voted, I thought, to include the one that warrant. I don't think.
Right. We didn't vote on supporting them. We wanted to do it all at once.
That's my sense. And we have three options. We could vote tonight. We could actually, if we wanted, vote at eight AM on Saturday morning.
We could do that on Saturday morning.
In our pre-meet, or we could just do it with advisory. Now, Dan and I met at length last Friday. He thinks it would make advisory hearing go quicker if we had already voted on maybe not all of them, but most of them, and we can just report our vote.
I I think that's typically what we've done, Jeff.
Yeah, yeah.
Where we vote ahead of time and then report our vote on Saturday.
There might be a few where we want to. The only time I disagree is if it's somewhat controversial, if we want to hear the public comments in a hearing before we vote.
Understood.
Yeah, maybe for the ones that we know are are basically rubber stamp and we've already, you know, clearly approved them. We could vote in, but for others, I think we need to hear the advisory discussion. And I don't want to vote until I've heard the entire discussion on Saturday. So in the past, I know we've done it in for some or all of them, the advisory discusses. The select board has a chance for input, then the public has some chance for input. Then advisory votes and select board can vote then if they want to.
Jeff, can I make a suggestion?
Uh, okay, Eric has his hand up too. Go ahead, George.
I was just going to say, I think I'm waiting till Saturday morning, because we're going to have that eight AM meeting and we have nothing on the agenda for it as of now. I think that would be a perfect time, because it's going to be fresh on our mind to run through it and vote on, you know, probably select, there's a whole number of them that we already have decided on, which ones we want to hear and kind of do that all Saturday morning at eight AM.
That's what I think. We can do it, almost have a mini consent agenda where we vote on maybe a we could all sort of agree on whatever the number is twelve or fifteen that we are no brainers and then have some that we want to hear. Eric, you've had your hand up too.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should vote on some of them now. I think we have it here now. We've been talking about them forever. I think we should do it like they do in town meeting. Where someone just reads them, reads off the thing. One of us will say hold or pass or whatever, and those will be the ones we discuss more. So at least create the consent and do the consent tonight. I think that's reasonable to do. We can go down there. And then we'll have a discussion and see if there's one, two, three, four, or five that we think are going to talk about. If we think it's going to be a lengthy conversation, maybe then we can meet at eight o'clock and go, you know, and then talk about them further. But I would like to actually rattle off and do, I guess, the quote-unquote consent tonight.
I think we could probably do it quickly. You're proposing that we just read the title of each one?
It just like a town, yeah, I mean, I usually like the moderator creates a true consent agenda. Yeah, we'll read the title, go down, and one of us will yell hold if we want to discuss that one further. We don't think it's going to be whatever. And then we're done, we make the mass vote, and then we can decide after that conversation, we can decide, hey, you know, do we want to talk about one, two, three of these or what have you?
That's fine. So Marion, do you have another comment? Your hand's still up. Do you have a?
No, I'm good. I I agree with what Eric just said.
Right. Let's go through and do that. Now, Michael, did you have a comment related to this?
Yes, I had two. Well, I had two. The first one was for Jeannie to tell me where on the town website is the warrant posted, because I can't seem to easily find it.
If if you, Michael, if you go to the town's website, the front page under news and announcements at the bottom, it says, uh, hold on.
While you're looking there, I just wanted to, it's come up since then, listening to your discussion now about voting that while I understand the principle of it, I'm not sure that I should dissuade you from what you're about to do, but I think it would be best in general that you post if you're going to do that kind of thing there. I've in terms of this kind of voting and stuff there. I mean, in the past, many.
Posted for Saturday, if that's what we're supposed to, for tonight on the warrant and for Saturday.
I know, but it wasn't very clearly articulated on either agenda that you're going to be voting on the warrant articles. Historically, many years ago, you voted often in the months up to this period now where it was, you'd have a public hearing as part of your normal hearings. You would discuss these things and make votes along the way on different things. And people were aware that you were voting and can comment. I actually find, and I think you, I would suggest you go back to that in the future.
Well, it says review and consideration of signing the warrant. That would imply to me that we're reviewing the articles.
Well, I don't think it is for most people. It wasn't for me and I, it's a.
How could we sign it without reviewing them and looking at each article?
Because historic, because of the past, you've established a pattern. In the last few years, you've done a pattern where you haven't voted on it until that it's it's the public hearing has become this combined advisory and select board meeting where you would advisory would vote and you would vote on each thing.
No, that's not, that's not accurate. We've we've had ones we voted on and we just reported. I remember Mike Chimo would pipe in and say, you know, advisory vote, I mean, the select board voted, you know, five to nothing in favor. So that's not accurate.
We have different recollections of it.
And Michael, I I would agree with Jeff that in a way that like, the last few years, you're correct, Michael. We do hold off and try to vote on everything at once, so we can look at the big picture and not not get bogged down in, in, you know, a lot of times we, as a town can't see the forest through the trees. So that's my, that's been my push and I'll fully take responsibility for the fact that I think we should vote on things all at once and not willy-nilly here and there and forget what we voted on and then not remember who voted what on when. So so that's me, but I think the last few years, Jeff is correct. We have voted beforehand, whether it be right beforehand or
Yes, right beforehand is is the same thing for me, as opposed to in the past, when sometimes things were voted in the over the the few months before, as things were discussed, you would do things. It's like with budgets. I used to come to you and for the con-con budget in December and you would vote on that before it even went to advisory. And so there's been, I don't mind it evolving. I just, and I can understand some of the the practicalities of what you're about to do. I just think it's just not so clear to people, at least it wasn't to me, that you're shifting to that you're going to, that this agenda item meant that you were going to discuss items and just vote on them. And whether.
It says review and consideration. I I
I understand.
I semi hear what you're saying, I semi don't, but let let us keep going, Michael. We we got your point.
And I guess if Jeannie could tell me where it is that she sees it on the downside.
Sure. If you go to the front page of the website under news and announcements at the bottom right-hand corner, it says you all click on that and it's the town meeting information seventh one down. If you'd like me to move it up, I can move it up tomorrow.
Yes, I would suggest you move it up. But okay.
It's just that.
Michael, we can take this offline. We don't.
I know, I'm sorry. Can we do, can we move on with our meeting, Michael?
No, I'm through. I just thought for the public, it would be nice to know where it is now that we know. That's all right. I'm through.
So so Eric, are, I'm not sure if we're on board here. Eric's, you have your hand up, and Eric's proposed that we go through and just decide on each one if we want to vote tonight on each one.
The hand up is basically, now this one means to do it. It's just a way to, for time purposes, because we might actually so we're meeting at eight on Saturday and when's the advisory start? Is it eight thirty or nine?
Eight thirty. They moved it up a half hour.
A lot of time to to discuss. That's why I'm learning. We pull out the easy ones, based on our discussions here in the select board. And I think a lot of us, myself included, have attended advisory discussions. I've also attended planning board hearings. I have, I have a good sense of what's going to be controversial. We can just pull them out right now and just decide what we're going to do with them. You know, I mean, I think we all have a good sense. Oh, we could go down the list or do whatever you want. I mean, it's just me. I appreciate what's Michael saying, but I don't think anyone cares if we do like cemeteries tonight. You know, surprise, show up for that.
I got it. So are you okay with that, George and Paul and Marion? I think that's a good way to go. So how about are you comfortable if I just read the title on the checklist of each article and you just say hold if it's something you would? I think if we use the hold for things that we want to vote on during advisories hearing and all the other ones. If you don't, if we don't have, if no one says hold, we'll assume that we can vote on it tonight.
Sounds good.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
You okay with that, Paul?
Yep.
And Paul, can we do, if we go through this whole list, can we then just vote on the ones that were on hold like it's like we do with a consent agenda, just say we?
Yes, we can. We can say all all our, I'll make a motion that all articles not on hold be supported by the Board of Selectmen. Something like that.
Okay, perfect. All right. So just holler and say hold. I'll just keep reading. One is town report, so just stop me. I'm just going to keep going. Two is the fiscal year twenty-three supplemental appropriations. Three is OPEB trust fund. Four is improvement embellishment of cemeteries. Five is revolving funds. Six is stabilization funds. Seven is omnibus budget. Anyone want to hold that just in case there's a sub-budget?
Let's let's hold that one just just so we can hear all the budgets before we vote.
There may be a few that we want to, yeah. Twenty, uh, capital improvement plan is eight and consists of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, specific items totaling just under a million dollars.
I'll hold, I'll I'll ask for a hold on that.
On all the capital items?
Yeah.
We should hear advisory on that.
Because I want to hear advisory, want to hear what the total is, how they're going to fund it, free cash or.
Good points.
Good debt.
Yep. And then nine is the regional school committee capital expense.
Hold that one as well along with the.
Okay. Use of free cash, number ten. Funding the three hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Combined collector treasurer. Should we listen on that one? Okay, amend general bylaw on assessors.
Hold that one.
Land acquisition to change the membership. Number fourteen. It's going from capital budget to groundwater protection. Fifteen is general bylaw, chapter six, capital budget committee. Sixteen is gentleman, general bylaw, personal administration plan for the longevity program. Seventeen is Sean clean, town opt-in to mass general law on statutory speed limits. Eighteen is a planning board, which is the ground mounted solar. That's pretty complicated. Should we hold that one?
I think we should hold that. I need to hear more about that, yeah.
Nineteen is energy and sustainability that go into the stretch energy, energy code. Which would replace the specialized one or supplement the specialized one.
Definitely hold that one.
Then there are four from. Then there are four, uh, from the town clerk that are renumbering of, uh. Uh, general bylaws, the zoning bylaws and housekeeping changes to the same. Okay, the only one, um, that I might differ on is we didn't hold. The treasure collector and I voted. I'm happy with my vote when it changed, but I was the one dissenting vote on that one.
Well, we haven't voted, we haven't voted on anything with support. That was just to include it, Jeff, so.
Okay, but I could easily vote in favor.
That's a totally different vote on whether to put it on and whether to.
Well, yeah, but if we're going to do this, is, we're going to vote on all these as a consent.
Yeah, if you want to hold it, then hold it.
Yeah, let's hold that one. Hold. So I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven holes. And they're on, the articles are seven, article seven, article eight, article nine. Twelve, thirteen, eighteen and nineteen. Those are the holes I have.
On Saturday, we have, uh, four minutes each.
Well, we have all day. I'm going to specifically recommend that we stay in session. Until advisory adjourns. So if they're there for eight hours, we have an eight-hour meeting. If they're there for two hours, we have a two-hour meeting. I would not adjourn at eight-thirty and be that for the end of the day. We need to be able to talk during the meeting. We need to be able to take votes during the meeting. We may change our vote on, on an article that we're supporting now. We may decide not to support it after. We hear what advisory has to say and what the, the public has to say. We need to stay in session.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's, that's not what I'm talking about. Advisory would prefer if we voted ahead of time, but I, so I guess as long as if I was okay. That we discuss each article and vote before they do. I think as long it is their meeting, I know it's a co-meeting, but it really is their meeting. As long as that's okay with them and that's, we're going to do that with seven articles.
Why, I've discussed, I'm, Jackie and Steve, Stephen have their hands up. I would, I would just say that I discussed this at length, but then there's some. I or articles that I said earlier, I want to hear what the public says and what advisory says. To help me decide, particularly the public, because we haven't had. To Michael's point, too much public comment on this. So there may be some, we want to just hear those. Inputs there. So, um. As of right now, though, there would only be seven articles that we would not have voted on. So we're doing a compromise. So let's go in order that I see people. Jackie, do you want to?
I, I can go after Stephen. This is, um, more about. The way you guys are managing your person, your meeting on Saturday.
Okay, go ahead, Stephen. And then Dan, you both have your hands up. Whoever wants to talk first.
Oh, actually, if, if Dan has his hand up, I'll, I will, uh, feed the floor to him. He's, I'm going to guess he's going to say the same thing I am.
I think so. But, but I can wait average and pick one I like.
Hey, everybody. Um, so appreciate that you're, uh, doing some of this voting tonight. Uh. We're hoping that our meeting on Saturday, it will surely be most of the day, but hoping that we can get it done Saturday and don't need to have a continuation. So to the extent that routine business can be taken care of ahead of time. I think that will facilitate the meeting and increase the chances that we can get it all done on, uh, all done on Saturday. As you'll remember, the, uh, the, the sequence for any item. That isn't part of a consent agenda and, and handled altogether is right. Public comment. Uh, followed by advisory discussion, followed by more public comment, followed by an advisory voting, uh, session. Uh, and then follow, um, advisory motion session, followed by discussion of that and then, and then an advisory vote. Uh, I think if the select board would like to hear the advisory discussion first. Then, uh, I think if you wanted to have your discussion during that second public comment period, I think that would work fine. Uh, if, if, if you know, that was, that was your preference for how to do it, but that's sort of how we were thinking about putting it together and. If, if that works for you, that's great. If, if, if there's a different way you want to do it, we should talk about it, but that was. More or less the arrangement that Jeff and I had, had talked about previously.
And that, in that session, we would also vote, not only in that, in the public. After public com, second public comment session, we would then discuss it and vote.
Right, and then we would vote after you.
Right, yeah, I think that's the best way to go. Does anyone disagree with that?
Uh, will we, will we have a, a select board vote then just before the advisory vote?
Yes, I think so, but not, I don't think we will on, on the. Ones we're not holding tonight, the answer would be no. Those I, we would just vote, we're going to do a consent vote on the seven. Uh, other than the seven that I just listed. We'll vote on those tonight. So we can just, we won't have to.
We can just report, we'll just report on the vote.
Yeah, that would, that, that would be terrific if, and, and of course I would turn Jeff to you with just. What, what was the select board's vote and it'd be very helpful, I think, for everybody to hear. Select board voted not this way on this particular, uh, article and now, and now we can just move on and not, not. Not spend additional time on that.
Yeah, and it's, it's seven items that we're not going to vote on tonight. So it'd be just sort of seven of the twenty-three.
And those are surely the same ones that, um, advisory discussions will, uh. Be more involved in, and, and lengthier than, than the ones, the, the ones that you're doing a consent agenda. Uh, are unlikely to be controversial for advisory.
Exactly.
Right, and two of them are also the capital and omnibus, which I don't think we have any. Major issues with. It's more, we want to hear the discussion because those are such important items.
Yeah.
I, I think it's possible that there could be advisory holds on some of those with, that would get pulled out and then. The non-hyphenated items would be voters that consent agenda and there could be, there could be some items from the, uh, omnibus or from the capital list that. Could elicit an advisory discussion.
Yeah, I think that's all good. So you're okay with that plan then, Dan?
Uh, I think that works fine. Steve, did you want to, um. Jump in, uh, if, if I said something different than what you had in mind?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess the only sort of extra color I would add is to remind the select board that the public hearing is. As Eric said, it is advisories meeting. And so even, even during that time, I think when the select board is, when you guys are having a discussion about an item that you. Um, haven't voted on yet. Um, I would just keep in mind that it remains advisories meeting and Dan will still be chairing that portion. I don't think Dan is. Uh, going to be seeding the discussion to, um, to Jeff as, as chair of the select board. Um, and that would mean that we would ask you to respectfully, uh, limit your comments to two minutes each, just as all the rest of, um, the public comments are. Um, just again, just to try to keep it moving because, because traditionally, um. Uh, select board has not had their full discussion and then voting session during the public hearing. Um, I, I don't think we would have wrapped the whole thing up in one day if, if that were, um, common.
Thanks, thanks, Steve.
So the one thing I'd like to ask on that actually, and sorry to interrupt this wherever Stephen said it. I understand you're not succeeding discussion to Jeff, but at least you should seed, I guess, the vote to Jeff. You know, I mean, I can understand each one of us gets two minutes and we get to talk through, through Dan, through the, um, chair of advisory. But that one's a little tricky. I think Jeff should at least collect the votes and report the votes then to the, um, to Dan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, as, as, as Steve said. Uh, you know, I do to keep things moving, do want comments to, you know, stick to two minutes and then, and then after a rounded comments, uh, get, get to, get to a vote and. It's fine by me, Jeff, if you collect the votes. That, that, as Eric said, that makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah, and I think we'll have the same rule, not only the two minutes, but not repeat someone else's comment. So if Eric makes a comment, I'm not going to make the same comment that he did, uh, as example. So. We'll have that same aspect. So I don't think it'll be long discussions.
Sounds good.
That makes sense? And then, uh, tell us what we're forgetting, Jackie. No, you're muted, you're muted. There you go.
Yeah, sorry about that. I just wanted to remind you that you do need to stay in session because you, you're on two different Zoom calls. And I just wanted to remind, especially if you are going to be discussing the ballot questions at the end of advisory when the hearing is over. I need to make sure, you know, that Dan doesn't shut off the Zoom because you guys.
Well, what I, what I'm thinking.
In, in session, unless you move the ballot questions to the thirtieth. You could do that.
Does that give you enough time, Jackie?
Yeah, I'll move them by the fourth, April fourth. So if you wanted to do that, I just wanted to make sure that you guys stayed in session after the advisory hearing is over. Because if you are going to vote on the ballot questions.
I don't think, there's only four ballot questions that you listed, I think. I think we should just get it done on Saturday.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not a big deal, I don't think. We, we, it's not even going to have a discussion. It's just Paul wants to know, maybe they're going to pull one of the ballot questions if they decide to fund it with free cash, I think. They're all capital, they're four capital items, I think.
Right, but you still need to record the vote. So that's.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I would rather get it done on Saturday. What, we're, we're going to have two meetings. We have a meeting from eight to eight-thirty that's a. Published meeting just for the select board. We're going to actually close that meeting and then we'll have to. Have dual meeting openings at eight-thirty for advisory and us. And I think we should just do the ballots at the end and, and I think for however long. Five minutes it takes the select board, I think advisory should just stay and we'll just have the whole meeting go. Five minutes longer to approve the ballot questions, I think.
Jackie, a question on that. Do we have to? Close our session and reopen because we're going on a separate Zoom? Or can we continue in the same session on the second Zoom?
I, 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 I know you're asking her, but the reason I think we have to is because we're doing it virtually. It would be a different recording. That's why I think we have to do it. So. People could go, you know, it's, they're both public meetings, but we're, we're going to have a recording. We don't want to have it be one recording.
And it's, it's two, it's two zip, different Zoom calls.
Yeah.
You have to, you're going to have to sign out of the select board meeting and then sign back into advisory. It's two different Zoom numbers.
Yeah, if we were doing it in person, George, it would have worked, but I don't think we, I don't think we could do it with a Zoom. So.
Can I make a motion?
Well, let me see about a little more discussion. I've got Eric and Marion have their hands raised, Paul, before we make it. Go ahead, Eric.
So just, um, I'm just going to bring up what I said at just the beginning. We want to look at these and consider any discussion now. You know, there's at least two of these articles where I think the approach, I think the people who are most affected are actually on this Zoom call right now and so on like that and. And I don't think any, you know, advisory or any other meetings are going to kind of change our opinion. I could be wrong on it. Or, um, or we want to hold everything off. So I mean, we did have seven that we held on. I mean, the budget, I agree with, with, with George. Way too big a thing to talk about. Just way too big a thing. Do that as we go through it advisory. That's a no-brainer. But I think combined treasure collector and maybe board of assessors, probably not the zoning change. And maybe not even the, um, the stretch code. So I think that one might be a little bit more controversial, whatever. Um, do we want to at least consider discussing a couple of these right now?
Well, I.
We have a lot of things that we have to still get through tonight, Eric, and, and to be quite honest, and we have to be here all day Saturday. So I would. I think with those few items that we want to discuss, maybe we could have that half hour discussion before the meeting.
Sure. That works for me. I, I, you know, I, I still think a couple, the two you're referring to, I would like to maybe hear the public comment, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
But, but, um, but George is right. We can talk about that from eight to eight-thirty and. You might sway me. So I guess I would propose what we conceived. At the start of this, which I think Paul was about to make that motion, weren't you, Paul?
Yes, if I could. Uh, I move that the Board of Selectmen. Support and recommend favorable action. On all articles. That were not held.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Mike.
And I am I as well. And just for the minutes Diane, the held ones are se, articles seven, eight. Nine, twelve, thirteen. Eighteen and nineteen. Those are the seven that were, uh, held. Thank you, guys. That's great. And we're going to hold off, uh, the next thing on the agenda was the ballot questions, which we're going to hold off on. And discuss that day, so as per Paul's, uh, comments. So the next agenda item is consideration of appointments. Um. Diane, uh, if you want to, we've, we've read the names. There, there's three names, Farm Pond Advisory, uh, Zinnia Wild.
Yeah, she was here early. Oh, she's still here. Zinnia's still here, yes.
Yeah, do you want to just say something quickly, uh, uh, after we've bored you for an hour and a half or so?
It's all really interesting. I have to say that.
Well, Farm Pond is critical and we were challenged so much by the drought last year. I swam the perimeter of it, as people tell you, all summer long. So. I think it's really a critical committee.
Yeah, I do too. I've been working with the committee for about a year.
Yep.
I think, doing water testing and, um.
Yeah, Tom Trainor's on here too. I know he's big in that. Yep.
Yeah, and, um, I just really love it. So I'm hoping to continue.
Awesome.
Path, um, Zinnia's been working with us since when? September, uh, August, coming to all of our meetings, getting in the water, testing with us, uh. Doing all sorts of things. So we're thrilled. She's already kind of walked the walk and talked the talk, so.
Excellent. Thank you for volunteering.
So can I make a motion?
Sure, Paul.
Can I move that we appoint? The following three to the positions outlined in the agenda. Zinnia. Wild for a term to expire June fifteen, twenty twenty-six. Robert Wolf to a term to M A P C. For a term to expire June fifteen, twenty twenty-four. And Deb for a sec, another sixty-day extension. Through May sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. And, uh, the next item on the agenda is acceptance of the Acts of twenty twenty-two. This relates to a COLA adjustment for retirees. I've had it described to me. Diana, is there, um. Do I need to read anything for this? It was in our packet. I don't know what the. I think it's a pretty rote thing that it's just, uh.
Jeff, there's nothing in particular you need to read. It's a request to the Middlesex County Retirement System.
Yeah.
For the town to accept the, uh, chapter two sixty-nine of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two. Um, this would allow for a one-time, uh, larger COLA adjustment. Uh, outside of this act, um, only a three percent COLA could be, uh, allowed for retirees. This adds an additional two percent as a one-time adjustment. Um, it requires two-thirds of the select boards of the Middlesex County municipalities to approve. I'm on a, an email chain with, with all of the town administrators of those communities. About. Half of the twenty-odd, um, communities have voted to accept the, the acts. Um, you have until June thirtieth to, to do so, to make your decision. Um, this one-time COLA adjustment, um, adds about one percent to the unfunded, uh. A total of the, the retirement system. And they've done, uh, a study of when they, it would actually hit the adjustment or the allocation that the town receives. It wouldn't hit our assessment until two thousand twenty-six. Um, so, um, they're requesting that the, the Board of Selectmen consider adopting, um, these chapter and acts.
And I think it's consistent with, um, you know, we went to four and a half percent for our COLA this year. I mean, this is a retroactive one, I realize, but, um. You know.
This would be a one-time COLA of five percent.
Yep. So, uh, Paul, you were going to say something?
Yes, because we have until June thirtieth and because of the lateness of the hour, it's nine o'clock. And because. I've sat through these, these votes in other communities. And there's an unanswered question, which is, how much is it going to cost the taxpayers of the town over? What period of time? That wasn't in any of the paperwork? How is it going to affect the taxes and so on? I, I would suggest we postpone this to another meeting.
That makes sense, I think. But I would rather not wait till June thirtieth also. So maybe, uh, whether it's April sixth or.
I propose you postpone it till May tenth.
Okay. All right, well, uh.
You're going to be hearing that a lot from me in the next two months.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I think so. So, um. I think we might, uh, go quite that far, Jeremy, but maybe we can look at how busy this April sixth is because I, I think. I don't know who would quantify that. Do they, would we have to get a Deb or, um. To, to look at the impact on Sherburne's, uh, like a budget impact or is it?
Yeah, because we're, what I would call sort of a marginal. Community in, in the center. Community in in the sense of of uh, our receipts and our expenditures are. Are pretty much equal. Uh, so any change to add to our expense load? Then the question comes, how are we gonna fund it long term? And does that mean a general operating override, or does that mean we can fund it with? It it's a thing that I'd like to hear advisory, uh, uh, we'd like that to consult with advisory on that. And get a better sense. If we can afford it, by all means, if we can't afford it. Or if it looks like it's gonna make things really difficult and we have to go to an override, then I I I don't want to do an override.
Okay, so I think we'll do an analysis, Jeremy, and I, you and I can maybe talk to Dan and we'll. Figure out what the next step part. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay with that? Thank you. And so I want to give special kudos to to Beth and Dawn. Who uh, are very glad that we have Zoom meetings instead of in-person meetings, so they weren't sitting here for two and a half hours.
Or or driving frantically across the river because I think they went to Dover.
Dover first, yeah.
Oh, did you? Yeah. But I apologize for putting you at the end of the agenda, but at least we gave you a warning in advance, so um. I'm not sure. Are you gonna lead the discussion, Don?
Uh, yes, thank, thank you, Jeff. And um, also Angie Johnson is here representing the Regional School Committee tonight. She actually sits on our building. Uh, subcommittee, so she will um, well represent the region. Yep, thank you. Um, and so um, I had come before the select board um, at one of your Saturday meetings and presented this project initially. Um, so I would just want to highlight a couple of changes since um, we last met before we talk about the IMA. Just so you fully understand the project that we're requesting funding for. So as you know, it's the seven rooftop air handler units at the high school. Through our meetings with uh, both capital committees in Dover and Sherburne. Uh, there was a request that we look to replace these models with full electrification models. And get rid of the small gas piece for the fossil fuels. Um, and so we have completed that work and um, uh, uh. Right now, I think there is a model that would be uh, compatible with our existing curvature and our needs, our electrical needs. Uh, that we could do the switch out that way. So I wanted to let the board know that that is something that we have. Uh, changed and that will be what will be in the bid specs when they go out. Um, in addition, we've been talking to both towns about um, the opportunity to use any kind of green community funding for this project. As you know, both towns uh, participate in green community, and because of that, the region is available to utilize um. The access of the towns for any region projects. Uh, so uh, know that those discussions are going on. For both um, this project and for any projects going forward, that we continue to work with both towns and looking to maximize what we can. Uh, from um, other outside surface sources of funds.
And that would include like an ever-source, like, cause it's really demand-side reduction is what they're getting at, so it would be. Like it, like the library, we got some ever-source.
Right, and those rebates are usually built into um, the equipment itself. So the green community would be if we're able to show that by replacing this. Where one, getting rid of a fossil fuel, but two, um, decreasing the demand if it's a, it's a more energy-efficient model.
Right.
And obviously, a model now is much more energy efficient than a model twenty-two years ago, so.
Right, right.
Um, we've, we've got that going for us there. Um, uh, so and then to that point, uh, we're bringing forward um. For the second year in a row, but we've been doing this since about two thousand thirteen, fourteen, I believe. Uh, the IMA agreement to allow each town to decide how they would like to fund um, the capital projects at the region. Um, the total project cost in the IMA is one point two and Sherburne's share of that is. Five hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. Um, the one other change to the this. I made this time around versus other ones is based on the timing of this project. Uh, we will not be able to actually um, install these until the summer of twenty twenty four. There's a currently a. Thirty to thirty-three month lead time on these units. Um, so therefore, we change the payment request date from July fifteenth. To November fifth. Um, and that'll coincide with one of the interest payments for the town for the um, the current debt that the the region holds. Um, and so that's hopefully gives the towns um, a little more time to either one, hold on to their cash, or two, have more time. Uh, for the bonding. I know Heidi uh, was a little bit excited about that piece. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, that that is a date change. Um, in the current IMA. And then I can update you that, yes, we were all um, at the Dover Select Board. Uh, Selectman Meeting um, earlier this evening, and they did approve the IMA.
So if I could.
Yes, Paul, go ahead.
So I've, I have voted in favor of this probably a dozen times. It seems like. Ev- every time it comes up, it makes sense for us. It makes sense for Dover. It's been. Reviewed by council many times on for both communities and for the region. So I'd like to move uh, that we. Approve it and execute it.
Second.
Second, is there any uh, select board discussion? Eric, your hand's up.
Just, just a question, and I think it's my own ignorance. So do we, do we do an IMA for every capital expenditure? Or you do with the um. Uh, would uh, doesn't um.
With the region. Yes.
Feel like, okay, I didn't.
No, uh, well, that's what I said. You had a little break. We had about a two, a three-year span. Uh, before last year, where the region actually had small capital needs and funded it for their excess and deficiency. So we did, so you might not have seen as many IMAs as if you'd been on the board since about two thousand thirteen. We were doing annually at that point. Um, and so last year might have been the first time. That you had seen it if you hadn't been around for the last three years.
Yeah, I've been around for five, but I have a bad.
Five, but yeah, so I think the last one we did might have been like eighteen. Um, and we took a little break and then we did one last year and one this year. And it does work out well. I mean, some years, um, like last year, I think both towns did bond. This year, I think Dover's using free cash. You may be uh, borrowing, so that is the beauty of this. It allows the towns flexibility and it also um, you know, if you're already bonding other projects, you can combine that versus the region. And carrying all those costs on our own and then you guys paying double.
Right, right. And Dover had about six million in free cash at that time, as I recall, so. We weren't in the same position.
Right, right.
So anyway, so uh, we uh, George seconded, I believe, so let's take a vote on the motion. Uh, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all settings of the meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see you on Saturday.
All right.
Thank you for your support of our schools. Thank you.
Absolutely.
When do we sign this? We signed.
When we, when we go into, can, you have a copy of it, Don, that you can get to Diane? Cause we could sign it when we go in to sign the.
Yep, Diane, Diane has a copy, was in your packet, so she can print a page. Um, and then yeah, we'll, we'll coordinate the the signatures off three.
Cause we gotta go in and sign our warrant like tomorrow, Don, so she can just have it. We can get it.
Available, perfect.
Sign of both at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, we can do both.
Okay, thank you very much.
Perfect.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Well, we made it, guys. So now we're to routine business. Does anyone have a select board report?
Just speaking on the schools, we are making some progress on the contract.
Um, was it Wednesday night or Tuesday?
We met again last night, yep.
Yep.
Um, with the teachers' union. We are all optimistic that we can get it done before. There's just, just some background. There's a lot of communities that. Are still work, are that are working on expired contracts. There's legislation to allow teachers to strike. There's, there's been a lot of issues with, with these union contracts and a lot of push. Um, in my opinion, from the MTA. To, to make these teachers and all the schools have similar contracts, but and you know, they're all, so, so there's. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work being done on it. Um, and I can't get in any details, obviously, because it's all an executive session, but it is making some progress.
Did you explain, explain that they have to sign it by May tenth, I assume?
Yeah, well, we do know, we did, I mean, there are budget constraints, obviously, but it's a matter of, I mean, their contract technically goes till June thirtieth.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but there's a lot of school districts that are working outside of contract.
I've read, I've read that at the Globe, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Paul, I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
I I was gonna say the same thing that you said, that make, I'm just gonna tell George, get it done by May third, uh, May ninth.
Well, here's the, here's the funny part. Um, while Robin is actually running for reelection in Dover, but. One of the Sherburne School Committee members is not, that's on the committee is.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
One of the, and one of the regional school committee members is going off, and I'm going off the select board as of May ninth, so.
But I don't know.
We should, hopefully, we can get it done by then.
All right, thank you for uh, putting the time into those meetings, though. Appreciate it very much. Any other select board reports? As I mentioned, I've been at the library every weekend for the last several weekends, uh, helping set stuff up, and it's really, you're really gonna be pleased with it.
Excited to go through it next week.
Yeah, yeah, you'll, everyone's gonna be really excited, I think, so. Um, I know the staff is. So that's all I know. Um, is there any town administrator report or anyone to point out, Jeremy?
Uh, yeah, just a few things to give you an update. I'll, I'll try to be quick, um, but haven't given you an update in a, in a couple meetings. Just uh, an update on the Board of Health Shared Services, um, the Regional Shared Services uh. Program that we're looking into with Needham, Dover, and Medfield. Uh, interviews have been held with some stakeholders already. Um, but the, the first group meeting of all the towns is gonna be occurring on Monday. So that's kind of the kickoff meeting, to start conversations in earnest about what um, services we may be able to share regionally for, for public health. Um, so that's exciting. Um, folks may have heard some of the, the US EPA's news. Uh, they've released some drafts, regulations for PFAS and drinking water. So their uh, proposal is for four parts per trillion. It's a bit different what they're proposing than the Commonwealth's current standards of twenty parts per trillion. There's some different compounds and a different way they're calculating it. Um, so Mast EP is not sure exactly how that's gonna relate, um, and how they'll implement it yet, but. Um, the US PPA has now issued it as a draft uh, drinking water standard. Um, and will have, be having public hearings through the balance of the year and hope to implement something by the end of two, two thousand twenty-three. It will have an impact on our public water supplies here in in Sherburne.
It, it was also discussed on the Board of Health last night, which we could listen to the recording. Lisa Camp is the LSP and is a VP of a firm. That works in this space, but she's stepping down from the Board of Health in May also, so. She's, she's already done some analysis of it, which they discussed last night at the Board of Health.
Uh, and the offices of Senator Roush and uh, Representative Arena Derosa have reached out for input from the town as far as. Informing the state budget for FY twenty-four. Uh, so if we have any, any requests, we'd like to uh, incorporate into their budget requests. We should compile those um, and and get them to their offices. Uh, an update on the Fire Station Solar Project. Uh, the letter intent of intent was submitted after the board discussed this a few months ago. Ever Source has approved the interconnection, so that's, that's good news. A structural review has been completed. We've received a proposal for design and construction, which we need to do a little bit more due diligence with, with our, with power options. But that is looking good. Um, and um, things are are looking good to move forward with that contract. Such that the installation would occur in June and July. The website updates moving along. Um, the consultant is looking for some pictures, so if anybody has some pictures they'd like to help. Uh, put on the website, let us know. They're also looking for sample websites that we like, um, of other communities. Um, to help inform their initial design. So if you are aware of any, um, please pass that on to Jeannie and I. Um, and forward any pictures you may have as well.
They want more still pictures, but you know, we had that Zoom video, not Zoom, that um. Drone video that was done by Andrew Galette as an Eagle Scout project. He did a drone video of town.
They, they may actually be able to incorporate video, um, but they, they're mostly looking for stills.
Yeah, that's been on our website. That, that drone video's been on our website for some time, just to, just if you wanted to reference it.
I have all the uh, still videos, still uh, photos, I should say, most of which I took myself. In the open space plan and the master plan. And you can have all those if you'd like to use them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to you, Marion. That'd be great. Another thing to to point out, we've been, uh, Diane's working on scheduling some training. Um, that our town council put on for committees and boards and town, town staff on the open meeting law. Uh, how to take meeting minutes, how to set agendas. Um, uh, they'll talk about public records and conflict of interests. Uh, we're setting that up for May fifteenth at six thirty PM. There'll be more information to come on that, but. Uh, we want to get that, that news out to, to the various boards and committees of that opportunity. Um, and the last, um, just an update on the Tri-County Vocational School Building Project. The um. The vocational school would like, and representatives would like to come visit us sometime in June. That's somewhat after some MSBA action on. Their proposal, but in the, in the interim, there's been a, a lot of discussions among town administrators. Uh, about the, the process of, of the potential vote that would be in September. And some of the concerns that various communities have, um, you know, of the thirteen-member communities. Uh, some of the, the town administrators uh, hearing from their uh, select board are concerned that the vote. Uh, to approve the school is kind of disconnected on to, to how it's funded. Um, unlike other projects you may have seen, you know, to be a. The vote to approve it would be coupled with a debt exclusion. That's not, you're not capable of doing that now with, under the current legislation, so. There is a movement afoot to um, with some, some legislation that may be filed before the general court to, to update. How the, the vote may happen. So that, that may give the town more flexibility um, to, to implement that vote later, but. Um, just wanted to let the board know that there's some movement there. And um, that we'll, we'll get more of an update on the project in June.
Awesome, thank you. Diane, did you have anything you wanted to add from your perspective?
Uh, no, I'm gonna say thank you.
Okay.
I move to adjourn.
All right, well, right after I say Gesundheit to Eric, you can.
I'm allergic to long meetings.
Do I have a, do I have a second? Do I have a second? And you're basically adjourning for a day and a half, it turns out, but go ahead, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Thank you, guys.
Night.
Good job. Ciao.